Seven o'clock here.
Look at my eye, guys.
Mine says six fifty-nine. Okay, well, mine just jumped two minutes.
Seven oh one.
I don't know what's going on.
There's a speed warp right there.
I kept on looking down, and I thought it was kinda odd that it wasn't moving. Alrighty. Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order on Tuesday, May twenty-second, uh, two thousand eighteen, and the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment of silent reflection. Alright, is there any declaration of the community interest or general nature thereof?
Hi, I have two, item number H five, uh, the Grogus subdivision transfer block CAO TR dash four, and it's due to Mr. Sinker, this, he's the solicitor for Grogus subdivision, he's my employer.
Is there anything else? Uh, just one question, just to make sure I don't have a conflict. Kathy, in the ten, uh, tenders in quotes for the well, is that just regarding the well itself and drilling it, or is that with the decommissioning or the other?
Just the, the drilling.
Okay, so I don't mind that.
Installation and drilling.
Okay, so all good. Okay, if there's nothing else for any conflicts, we're gonna move into the minutes of our previous meeting, which is May seventh, two thousand eighteen, regular minutes. Moving to secondary for those, Council Hendricks and Deputy Nurse Stockton, is there any errors or omissions? Okay, all those in favor, pose and let's go. Okay, so we have, uh, our delegation for the night, which is at seven oh five, but since they're at the seat already, we'll, uh, proceed with them, so we have the Four Counties Hospital Service Foundation with their presentation, and we have Tom and Martha as well as Steph. So, uh, the floor is yours, and you can take it away.
Thank you, Councilman Smith and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and, uh, present on behalf of the foundation, and I, you've already been introduced to Marvin and Steph, um, the work with me and in the foundation and the work that we do. I've come into this role two years ago, and a year later I was chair of the foundation, but, uh, I'm enjoying it, and it's great to be able to get out to the respective municipalities to keep them informed of where, where, and what we are doing, as well as bring us up to date on programs that we might be doing. Our foundation was established in nineteen eighty-seven, and, uh, one of the goals that we have is to develop relationships with, um, that support the Four Counties Health Services Foundation. And I know that you, you may not be aware, Curtis, but we just recently had what, we had all four municipal, upper tier municipalities to our hospital last week for a day. It was really informative because we had a chance for them to sit down, their CAOs, and it was a real good day, and I think that it's gonna help us to be able possibly to build new ties and go forward. So, one of the things that we're trying to do is to develop, develop those relationships. And as you're very much aware, our government does not fund capital equipment, hospital capital equipment. This is one of the things that we run into in many of our presentations, people will come up with a question, "Well, doesn't the government fund that?" No, they do not cover capital, hospital equipment, such as beds, uh, tables, um, any of the equipment that we use in the hospital, from the nurse stations, sta, the fans, to digital imaging, any of that stuff has to be fundraised. We are a board of nine volunteers and four appointed board members, and since our inception in nineteen eighty-seven, we have raised over seven million dollars to, um, help the work at Four Counties Health Services. And I wanna thank you on behalf of the foundation for your past donations of totaling twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and then what has been our, the work of people coming up to support our golf tournament in, uh, July of seventeen hundred and sixty dollars. So, it's, it's all been well, well received, and we do thank you for that. And I'm gonna now turn it over to Steph, who will provide you an overview of the work at the hospital.
Thank you, Tom, Mayor Smith, Councilors. Well, thank you for having us once again, and certainly echo Tom's, uh, comments around how great it is for us to come to the communities that we serve, and explain a little bit more about what the hospital's all about. So, for those of you who are not aware, Four Counties Hospital is part of the Middlesex Hospital Alliance. So, we are a two-site organization along with the Strathroy Middlesex Hospital. Uh, Four Counties and Newbury is a primary care facility that does many things, but primarily focuses on providing inpatient care, emergency care, which is through the emergency department, providing diagnostic services, as well as a rehab department, so for physio. Our catchment area is roughly twenty-three thousand people, and as you can well imagine, it's in our name, Four Counties, essentially has a catchment area of residents that come through all four adjoining counties of Lantin, Kent, Middlesex, and Elgin. We have a hundred and thirty-one full-time staff, uh, full staff, uh, some are full-time, part-time, and casual. Sixty-eight percent of them reside in Middlesex County. So, for those of you who are more visually, uh, acute, um, give you a sense of, um, geography, this is where Strathroy, um, hospital is located, here is where Newbury, Four Counties, is located. The area outlined in dark gray would constitute what would be the, the, the largest part of our catchment area, but this isn't to say we receive patients from other areas in the lighter gray as well. Again, more visuals, more victorials, we are, uh, this is one of our first presentations where we actually have some fresh data. Our fiscal year ends March thirty-first of two thousand eighteen, in this case, so we have some fresh data to show that our emergency department continues to thrive. This is actually a five percent jump and increase from last year. We hit the ten thousand mark for the first time, and now we're at ten thousand four hundred. Aging population, physician, uh, family physician access issues, more complex cases, I think all of those are contributing to the increase in emergency visits, which, um, of which we're not a unique, like, other hospitals, such as our sister hospital in Strathroy and LHSC, they've all experienced some bumps in the emergency visit volumes. We are a twelve-bed inpatient facility, and we have been occupied, you know, ninety-four percent in terms of the beds being filled. So, what does that mean, what does that look like? So, it means on some days we might have seven beds that are occupied, and some other days we might actually have fourteen or fifteen, and how the heck do we do that? Well, we don't have hallway medicine like some hospitals in London would have, or in Toronto, but we do have some beds that we admit through the emerg department, and that, the, and the net average of the sevens and the fourteens and the twelves would average out to a ninety-four percent occupancy rate over the course of the year. Speaking of admissions, we roughly admit and discharge one patient a day, so it roughly equates to about three hundred admissions, three sixty. Cannot do any of this work without the, the kind contributions of our volunteers. They've staffed our gift shop, our bookstore, uh, they're starting a meal buddy program, which we're really proud of, and they equate, they, they add up to about, uh, almost two FTEs of work, just from the sole support of our volunteers. We do eight thousand digital images per year, and our average length of stay is about eleven days. What we also like to do when we do our presentations is show a little bit of a piece of the pie by county, uh, insofar as, for example, hospital admissions. So, when we speak to having three hundred and sixty-three admissions, we know that thirty-nine percent of those admissions came from Middlesex County, and that equates about a hundred and forty-two residents of Middlesex County. Fast forward to the emergency visits, a smaller piece of the pie here, so twenty-nine percent of the ten thousand visits come from Middlesex County, and you're, I, I always point this out, it's an interesting fact that forty-one percent of our visits come from Chatham Kent County, 'cause we get residents from eastern Kent County that say it takes two months for us to wait at Chatham Kent Hospital, therefore, uh, we like to go to Newbury, get, uh, quicker service, and it's worth the drive, so to speak, but we like to point that out. And last but not least, ambulatory care, so again, visits by specialists, such as cardiology, uh, dermatology, et cetera. Uh, twenty-seven percent, again, back to the same proportion coming from, uh, Middlesex County, which equates about four hundred residents. What we also like to talk about beyond the numbers and the statistics, of course, are, are some of our accomplishments of late. So, we have, uh, family physician recruitment is always a challenge in rural areas, and we're proud to have Dr. McCabe, who's joined us, he's a Dresden boy, so from the, from the area, in Kent County, um, Kent and Lantin area, and he joined about a year ago. And what's great about Dr. McCabe is that he not only has a family physician practice, uh, seeing patients, but he also covers some shifts in the emergency department, and he also does rotations to support the inpatients on the floor. On any given day, there's a rotation of about three or four physicians. And he's co-located with one of our longstanding physicians on site, Dr. Sharma. We had an opportunity to renovate some space, uh, for them, to make it appealing for them, as well as for the community that we serve. Uh, the family physicians who support the hospital are also augmented by the support of two nurse practitioners. Uh, not only do they support hospital inpatients as well, but they've each taken some specialized courses and, uh, interest in some, assisting with some clinics. So, for example, Derek will take care of the respiratory clinic and do COPD work with Dr. Sue Parker out of, uh, Sarnia. What's intriguing about the Sarnia clinic is Dr. Sue Parker used to come to our hospital, and we've since migrated that to a virtual clinic one, so there are some cameras at each end, we use telemedicine, and we also have a digital stethoscope at each end as well, so whatever's put on the patient's chest can be transmitted and heard through Dr. Sue Parker's digital stethoscope as well. So, and there's some good interaction between a nurse practitioner, and the specialist can stay in his home area of Sarnia. We also have done a lot of work with partnering with Chatham Kent Hospital to do some mental health counseling with the psychiatrist, and we are on year three, actually, it'll be three completed years, we're starting year four of the memory clinic. And what the memory clinic is, um, is to help diagnose, uh, seniors and, uh, and adults that may have dementia or some form of Alzheimer. So, what would happen in the past when a family physician in rural Ontario said, "Hmm, I think you may have some cognitive challenges that you need to get tested, I need to send you to Parkwood Hospital." So, imagine our journey when a patient with his or her spouse or partner travels over fifty kilometers on the highway to go to London, navigates the complex city streets of London, gets into a complex multi-level parking garage in London, navigates a huge Parkwood Hospital to hopefully get to the right spot for an appointment. The irony of all that is not lost on us, but that's why we said to ourselves, we can bring that expertise closer to home. We can partner with the Alzheimer's Society, we can partner with our family health team and with our hospital resources, and do our own clinic, and do the diagnosis there, and connect them to Alzheimer's on the spot if and when there is a diagnosis. So, we're very proud of that program. And again, yeah, it speaks to the partnership here with geriatrician support from Parkwood, if we need them, over the phone, but with all of the other partners around the table. So, what we've done with the memory clinic is said to ourselves, "Well, what if, uh, patients are diagnosed with these conditions? How do we do to support them in our community?" So, we formed some memory cafes in partnership with the Alzheimer's Society. So, once a month, uh, uh, clients with diagn, with diagnoses of Alzheimer's or dementia can come with their spouse, and they interact, there's some activities, there's some shared learnings, and there's some networking that happens with other groups as well. Very proud to also share some, uh, great improvements along the lines of ambulatory care, where I mentioned to you earlier that we continue to look at, you know, specialists that come on site. So, we recognize the need to have a second cardiologist, and it's Dr. McPherson. So, Dr. McPherson continues to work at UH, but once a month he comes and joins us, and he's, he's so enjoys working with us and vice versa, and feeling certainly mutual. Dr. Chandra is an OB-GYN from our sister hospital in Strathroy. You've probably seen a lot of the promotions from the Strathroy Foundation around, you know, uh, uh, Dr. Chandra and her ability to deliver babies and, and this and that. But what we're going to do in terms of harnessing her expertise is to have a gynecology clinic, a women's health clinic at Four Counties on a once-a-month basis. So, we're not in the business, and we don't have that infrastructure to deliver babies at Newbury, but certainly we will harness a gynecology, uh, expertise. We are also looking at partnering with, uh, the organization that used to be called CCAC, so it's the Home and Community Care Group of the Southwest Lynn, on forming what's called a flex clinic. So, again, a specialized clinic on pron site that looks at wound care and ostomy care. You may have seen some people that have a, after colon surgery, they have a bag, well, those bags need some cleaning and, and sanitizing and such, so the flex clinic allows those patients to do that, and we're hoping to start that in the summer, uh, in terms of having that clinic on site. Um, I'll skip endoscopy for a moment, but I'll speak to orthopedics. So, again, we will not be in the business of doing orthopedic surgeries at Newbury. However, we have an agreement by which the orthopedic surgeons will come to our hospital to do pre-surgical assessments and post-surgical follow-ups from our site. So, endoscopy is one program that, um, there's been a lot of work over the last, I'd say, twelve to eighteen months. The current scope system was beyond end-of-life. In fact, we had to put the program on hiatus after Dr. Everhart retired after a forty-plus-year career. And he kinda said tongue-in-cheek, but I think in all, in all seriousness, he said, "I'm the only one who knows how to work the kinks and nooks out of these scopes, so if you bring someone else in, they're gonna want a new set of scopes." Um, and we did a hundred and forty-six scopes in sixteen seventeen, which was, uh, a year past. Sixty-one were from the county of Middlesex. So, the hospital leadership assessed, you know, what do we wanna do moving forward? Do we wanna resume the scope system, do we wanna grow it, how do we recruit for it? So, we made the decision to not only resuscitate the program, but to look at increasing the number of procedures and keeping the care closer to home for a greater number of those residents. We have secured a physician to start those scopes, and I think we're looking at early July, so very excited to have that happen. The fun part about raising for scopes is that an endoscopy system is almost half a million dollars, and we're so gracious and happy to have Tom and his foundation board agree to fundraise these items for us. 'Cause really, when you look at what's in a half a million-dollar system, this is what we're looking at. We're looking at the carts, the traditional kinda heart of the system with the video monitors and all the inputs and outputs, the actual scopes themselves, we can kinda plug in and out depending on what kinda scopes, uh, procedure you're doing, an irrigation pump and water bottle, then you need to clean these scopes, 'cause I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want someone else's scope to be used with, if I'm next in line, kinda thing. So, we need to clean the scopes, and, uh, there's a pre-processing system that's used, along with a monitor, and as well, once the scopes are cleaned, there's a special drying rack, so all of those costs, and retrofitting that area is a half a million dollars. So, again, this is why it's so important for us to come and see you, and thank you for your past support, and, uh, take the pictures, and again, be very gracious and, uh, appreciative. On that note, from a hospital update, I think that's it, I'll hand it over to Tom, who'll complete our presentation.
Thanks, Captain. As you can see, there's a lot going on at Four Counties, um, and we're looking, you know what I mean? I think that's one of the things that's turning us around. We're not just a twelve-bed hospital with an emergency room which is open twenty-four-seven. We're providing a lot of new ambulatory care services that are vital to our community and keeping people relevant, as Steph pointed out with the memory care, having to run to London or to Chatham, to Sarnia, wherever, this stuff can be done there. Anyway, I wanna bring out some important facts to you. Private local hospitals are one of the essential services for people that are looking to move into an area. It's important. And the hospitals not only impact healthcare, but they also impact the viability and sustainability of our rural communities. Because if we don't have rural hospitals, people just aren't gonna be around. And that's where we come into our municipalities to present, because we feel that the municipalities have an opportunity to contribute to protect these vital services in our communities. At one of our presentations recently, we come across a slide that they are using, and this is at Chatham Kent, and they're doing a, they have what they call a CHC twenty thirty-five, and the lady that does, Victoria Bogner, um, presented the facts on this, and when young people are looking where to live, one of the amazing facts, ninety-two percent of them look for top. That's a huge number. I, I don't think, I, a lot of people would even comprehend that that was one of the top, little, the top, second top things that they're looking for, but it's, it's really important. So, it's really, I think, one of the things that we can point out to people, to show them that if you want to keep your municipalities viable and moving and growing, we need to, you know, keep the hospitals and our healthcare viable. As I pointed out at the beginning of our presentation, our health, well, Ministry of Health and Long Term does not fund hospital capital purchases, and so therefore, our hospitals rely on our foundations, um, to fundraise for such equipment. In the MHA, we are two boards, and there's the Strathroy Foundation and, uh, on Four Counties Foundation. Now, we find that because of our needs, it's better to keep them separated. Some, some alliances are combined boards, but we, we, over the years, it's, it's proven that we should remain as individual boards so that we can provide the funding that is needed. And when we can do new things and bring in like the diagnostic imaging, which I know you supported in the past, and now we're talking about our endoscopy program, those are things that will help keep care closer to home, and when we can increase those numbers, and that's also another thing that we, you know what I mean, will help us out in the future. One of the things that we have a real difficulty is when we get into capital campaigns such as this one, where we're having to raise four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, last time it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's where we run into a snag to develop, to fundraise enough dollars. Um, our yearly appeals, which you can see in our newsletter, are around roughly two hundred thousand every year. Our residents in the area are very supportive, and we've been able to, to, um, make our appeals every year with, with their support. But it's when we get into major appeal campaigns that we need to reach out. This year, we, um, as a foundation, we have just started into the process of developing a new committee, a fundraising committee. We're looking to approach all the businesses in the, in the area, um, the mutuals, the insurance companies, the banks, anyone that's out there that sees they're interested in, in helping support the hospital. And that's why today we come and we wanna thank you for all your support in the past, and we know that, uh, we were informed that you were, you know, you had already agreed to give us a nice support, and that money will be allocated to our endoscopy campaign. It is our goal as a, as a foundation that all of our major municipality contributors will be listed as part of that campaign, so your name will be on, on, as part of that, so that it's gonna be there, and, and hopefully, within the next year, we will be able to have raised the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and get moving on to the next project, because from what I understand, um, our DI suite that was just refurbished two and a half years ago is about five years away from having another update, so, you know what I mean, things like that continue to happen. But anyways, thank you for your time, and, um, if there are any questions, please ask.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom and Steph and Marcia, for your update on Four Counties. Is there any questions at all from council, comments? So, uh, before you go, I, uh, do have a check, I just, out of curiosity of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you're planning on raising, where, when did you start the campaign, and where are you at so far?
We just started in, in the new year.
Okay.
Um, and we're at, um...
We're at about a hundred.
We're around a hundred.
Excellent.
We're, we're, we're moving, and we're hoping, you know, we've got, we're, we've got a few more yet, we've been, I think, this is what our...
This is our thirteenth presentation.
Thirteenth presentation. We had a simple presentation, it's, like, they, we've been...
Been busy, yeah.
It's been a busy season, winter and spring.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hopefully, this check of five thousand dollars will, uh, help you get close to that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You will, thank you very much, everyone, thank you for your time.
Okay, so we're gonna jump into the, uh, our committee of adjustments. We need a motion to resolve that council convenes the committee of adjustment for the purpose of hearing consent application V O six two thousand eighteen, James and Linda De Bruin at twenty-one eighty Eggermont Drive at, uh, seven twenty-five. Council Sanders and, uh, Council Hendricks, all those in favor, pose and let's go. Okay, and, uh, before we start with the, uh, application, uh, the purpose of the following public hearing for the Township of Alhama Cap Committee of Adjustment, uh, is to give members of the committee of adjustment, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before the committee this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record, available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of the decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal, without having made a written submission to the committee, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township, and a sign-in sheet has been provided at, for your convenience, on the, uh, table in front of us. Jim and Lisa, would you like to move to the table there? And you've received a report from Erin?
Yep.
Excellent. So, Erin, would you like to go through the report?
Sure. Uh, before committee this evening, has a report offering favorable consideration for consent B zero six slash two thousand and eighteen, uh, submitted by James and Lisa De Bruin. The address is known musically as two-one-eight-zero Eggermont Drive, County Road twenty-two. Uh, the applicant is requesting to sever dwelling that has been deemed surplus to the farming operations. The proposed lot to be severed is approximately one hectare or two-point-four-seven acres, with the frontage of approximately one hundred and three meters or three hundred and thirty-eight feet along Eggermont Drive. The remnant farm parcel would be approximately eighty-one hectares or two hundred acres. The land proposed to be severed contained an existing dwelling, a garden shed, and a garage storage building. The dwelling is privately serviced with an individual subject system and well. The depth of the proposed lot is to be severed was determined based on the rear lot line of the adjacent property to the west. Uh, the lands proposed to be severed, uh, include an existing access onto County Road twenty-two. The lands proposed to be retained, being the remnant farm parcel, are largely in agricultural production and contain a wind turbine. The lands proposed to be retained also appear to have individual accesses from Eggermont Drive and Morse Road. Policy and regulatory framework generally permit severances of surplus farm dwelling severances in Alhama Cap. This proposal has been evaluated under the stipulated criteria outlined in the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the Alhama Cap official plan. Uh, based on this criteria, I am satisfied that farm consolidation has been achieved and is building a surplus to the farm's operations. The dwelling appears to be habitable and was constructed prior to January first, nineteen ninety-one. The applicants have requested that the existing garage be retained on the lot to be severed. The township's chief building official has recommended that if the building is to be located on the lot to be severed, it is to be inspected by a qualified professional to confirm structural soundness. The provincial policy statement and the township's official plan seek to keep the proposed lot size to a minimum necessary to accommodate the residential use and the associated on-strike private services. Um, in this respect, uh, the proposed lot is larger than required, um, and therefore, planning staff are recommending that a reduced lot frontage and reduced depth be approved. The recommended reduction to the depth and width of the lot proposed to be severed would result in an area of, uh, half a hectare or one-point-two-five acres. Um, I would further advise that the lands to be retained would require a zone change to agriculture only, which would prohibit the establishment of new residential uses on the remnant farm parcel. There will also be a requirement to rezone the proposed lot to be severed to, uh, surplus dwelling, to recognize that it is now a residential use, and will limit the range of agricultural uses permitted. Uh, based on the above, I am satisfied that the criteria for surplus farm dwelling severances have been achieved or can be met through conditions of a provisional approval granted by the committee this evening. Uh, in accordance with the Planning Act, the application was circulated. The township's chief building official and county engineer provided conditions for approval. Uh, the conservation authority and the drainage superintendent had no concerns. Based on this, I am recommending that consent application B zero six slash two thousand and eighteen be provisionally granted, subject to the standard conditions for approval, um, as well as, in addition, um, condition three, the applicant revise the area of the lot to be severed to be approximately zero-point-five hectares or one-point-two-five acres, with a lot frontage of sixty-eight meters or two-hundred-and-twenty-three feet, and a depth of seventy-six meters or two-hundred-and-forty-nine feet. Uh, condition five, that the owner provide road winding dedications to the county of Middlesex of up to fifteen meters from the center line of Eggermont Drive, along with frontage of the lands to be severed, to the satisfaction of the county engineer. And number six, that if located on the severed lot, the garage be inspected by a qualified professional, and the inspection report be provided to the township for determination of structural adequacy, um, to the satisfaction... and the inspection report be provided to the township for determination of structural adequacy to the satisfaction of the township.
Okay, is that everything? Okay. Jim or Lisa, would you like to add anything or any questions at all?
We have a few concerns with the smaller lot size. One thing, the hydro pole, where the hydro comes in from the road and feeds the house, would not be included on that lot in the revised one. And that garage that was included in the original but not in the revised one. It's basically a two-car garage with a bit of storage room. So it really should go with the house, and there's only access to it from the house, from the house laneway. And I think the rear lot line, if we kept it in line with the existing lot next door, would make a lot neater. Neater severance, keep everything square. The concerns we have.
Okay, sure council will, or the committee will address those if, in, when we get to that point. Is there, before we do that, is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to the application? I see a shake your hand. Okay. Is there any questions or comments to the, from the committee of adjustment? Okay, Council McKinnon?
I agree with the applicants that I don't have a problem with keeping the lot size even as applied for, but I don't think the land would ever be workable and, and you could utilize it for the, for storage. So I agree that it should be kept with the house.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Council Hendricks?
Yeah, that was my thought too. If I, if I look at the picture map, I don't know if this is taken in the dry summer, but it doesn't look like the land around it is farmed pretty. It's gullies and, yeah. Not sure on the right if that's a washout or.
That's, that's a little stream that.
Oh, that's the Adelaide Creek coming down.
It feeds into the creek.
Yeah. So it's, it's not farmable. It'd probably be conserved better as a lot.
Yeah, we've, we've planted, the conservation authority has planted trees in there over the years and it's, that's basically all it's any good for.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I could support the application as, as the De Bruins would like it, I think, so.
I agree. Yeah, I'm in favor of your regional application.
Jeff, your stockman, any questions or comments?
No, I, I'm, I'm not supportive of, in general, but I would see no reason why we should go to a smaller lot because, as having driven by there, there is not, no workable farmland there, so it, so, and it was part, that, that dry shed or it part of the farm.
Or the house, whatever you want to call it.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? I just had one question, if I could. I guess it's more of a, a question, I guess, for either Jim or Lisa or even, or Erin. The lot size of the, the farmland itself is over the, the two hundred acres. Was there any consideration of severing? I'm just thinking about going ahead in the future is that the retained parcel is going to be zoned as agriculture only of the whole two hundred acres, which means that there can't be a house built on it in the future. Did you consider severing that property into two one hundred acres to ensure that one of those hundreds could still be built on in the future? Or is that something that you, that was even considered or?
Haven't considered it, but it may, maybe should be considered, yeah.
And that's just something that I thought of in, in realizing it is a two hundred acre farm is that, but knowing that this is already in front of the committee, I, I just didn't know if that is something that you wanted to consider in that having a consent first to sever the two hundreds and then coming back and going forward with this consent to then sever off the house as a surplus dwelling from that hundred, which would then allow you to have the option of building a house on that other hundred acres. I don't know if Erin even wanted to, or if that.
Uh, it wasn't anything that we had discussed. To be honest, I haven't come across a situation where that has been done previously, but if that's something that we could defer to the next council meeting, if that's something that we wanted to take back and discuss and see if there's any policy regulations for that.
The, the only reason I bring it up is just because when you have a, if it's two hundred acres, that means that that full two hundred acres can't be built on. And I think for the benefit of the municipality and also for yourselves, I think it only makes sense that you consider that if you could, but.
So, yeah, no, I, I see your point, but if they could do that later, they do that, they really wanted to sever the two hundred acre parcels. They could, they would be allowed to do, let's say, in next year or unless the things change.
They have to get it rezoned.
But it would be the rezoning.
Yeah, okay, that's true.
Because the zoning, if we did it as shown, wouldn't be allowed to build on the two hundred acres. So if you wanted to split it later, then at least one hundred would have to be rezoned. So you could build on it if you wanted to. Is that right? We usually do it before we do this, I guess, if we wanted to do it.
Well, as of right now, we can only build one residential dwelling per property. It would be, have to be something that we would look into. I'm not sure if that's something that would be possible.
I understand that you need at least a hundred acres to, to sever the farm.
Forty, forty acres is the minimum lot size for.
Forty hectares.
Forty hectares, sorry.
That's a hundred acres.
A hundred acres.
If you split this and it's already got a house off it, you haven't got a hundred acres, two hundred.
It was over two hundred again, like two hundred and two.
Oh, yeah, because it's not straight.
No.
It's just something that I, I thought of, I should have thought, it clicked at me when I was sitting here, I should have realized beforehand.
So if we wanted to consider that, could we put this on hold?
Well, sorry, if I may, there are policies in place to prevent prime agricultural land from being severed. Basically, the only consent policies surrounding agricultural land are the surplus farm dwelling severances. I'm not sure if, if we need to defer this, if that would even be possible. It might go, come back, but it's, it's not something that they can entertain. I just, in case, I don't want it to be deferred necessarily if it's not something that.
Kathy Yerney, can you go add that?
Um, if, if you wanted to defer, we could put it off until the next committee of adjustment meeting and find out if it would be something that would be possible, but then it would be another application process. So this would be delayed until that application was dealt with and then this one would come after that. So it would be an, an extension of the application process. So we're looking at probably another two to three months. So it depends on how quickly you want the house to be severed.
It put us on the spot.
Sorry, it's, I just, I just want to make sure of all the options, so, yeah.
I think we'll go ahead with the way it is. I think we're happy with it. But, good point.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments from the committee, so we have the recommendation there with the.
If I may, I do need to report that we did receive a comment from Diane and Tony Streibach, and all they would like is a copy of the decision when it's made. They had no objections or no concerns on the sentence itself.
So the, the recommendation there with the fifteen conditions, and I believe that we're wanting to change condition number three to be the original as originally applied for.
Yes, we can just remove that condition.
Okay, so we're gonna move our second, Council McKinnon, and second by Council Sanders. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. To resolve that the committee of adjustment be closed at seven thirty-nine P M. and council reconvene in regular session. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move into our correspondence. The first section there is there are upcoming conferences, seminars, and meetings. So we have our regular meetings on June fourth, June eighteenth, and July ninth. They're upcoming. And then our first item, the correspondence is from the Strathroy District Chamber of Commerce, and it's their business and breakfast. Is anyone interested in attending that? Moving right along, correspondence item number two from the Assaul Bayfield Conservation Authority, and it's the minutes and board highlights. Item three is the two thousand and eighteen Saint Clair Regional, Region Conservation Authority April Meeting Highlights. Item number four is the, from the Minister of Senior Affairs, and it's the seniors month, which is June twenty eighteen. Item number five is from the Environmental Commissioner of Ontario, notes the environment, energy, and climate resources for municipalities. And then the next two are action items. The first one is from the Minister of Senior Affairs, and it's the senior achievement award. I don't believe, since I've been on council, we haven't. Okay, and then item number seven is resolution regarding hockey season realignments.
Would support it. It started in the middle of September and then down the middle of January. It should be start in the middle of October and finish the end of February.
Just for common sense reasons, not even hydro reasons.
Yeah, no, for common sense. You know, it started in August, first of September. So I would, I said I support it, but.
I support it.
I was filed.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand the relevance to our township in particular, but it's something I've always thought they should do.
So Council Sanders wants to move it? I'll move it. Council McKinnon wants to second that. I'll have some written down sometime. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And then we just need a motion to resolve that council receive and file correspondence items C C one to C C six. Council Hendricks and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Any bottomless?
Thank you.
Next, we have our committee minutes, and it's the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen Emergency Control Group Minutes. And we just have to accept those. Deputy Nurse Stockman and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. So we'll go into our staff reports, and our first one is from Public Works Manager. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, pretty straightforward. The COVID wind needed to fix a turbine on Seabro, off of Seabro. They asked to come in during the half-bowl season, which we allowed with a seventy-five thousand dollar deposit. The repairs have been done. We've inspected the road. There's virtually no road to the road itself, a little bit at, at the entranceway, which is very, very minimal. They've asked for their deposit check back, and so the report is to ask council to, to, to approve the check going back.
Okay, so the recommendation there, move on second there. Council McKinnon and Deputy Nurse Stockman, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Do anything else you'd like to add, Jeff?
Nothing, nothing, nothing's wrong.
Okay, any questions at all for Public Works Manager? No? So we need a motion to resolve that council accepts the report of the Public Works Manager as presented. Council Hendricks, or Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, we have our C O Treasury Report. Kathy?
Nikki Smith. Uh, the first item is the approval of the accounts for the period May fourth to May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, eighty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Is there any questions on the accounts? Perfect. So we need a motion to resolve that the, that council approved the account listings for the period of May fourth to May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight and, or eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. Council Hendricks and, or Councilor McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item number two is in regards to sponsoring the agribusiness tour. It is being held on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and it's largely being arranged through the Economic Development Department of the County of Middlesex. The participating businesses will be in Strathroy, Caradoc, North Middlesex, and Liddmekaf. In Liddmekaf, they are attending at Dortmund Brothers and Superior Propane. And as well, the Middlesex Federation of Agriculture has arranged a demonstration of a corn drive of a farm of Dave Bolton. They are asking for us to help sponsor the day through a sponsorship of two hundred and fifty dollars. The tour is free and the information regarding the tour is on your desk tonight. I will send the email to everyone if they would like to attend and go on and register yourself, but they are asking that we sponsor with two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so the recommendation there.
They want two hundred and fifty dollars from the town council.
From the township, yes.
I'll move, we give them two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, move by Council Sanders, second there. Council McKinnon, any discussion? Deputy Nurse Stockman?
We're, we're already on the poster, so we have no choice.
It was an oversight that we didn't get invited to the planning committee, and then they called us and said, would you be participating? We are stopping at local businesses, so suggest that council would, so.
We either have no choice, or we look at it as really good free advertising. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
I think I kind of walked through stuff.
Yeah.
The next item is in regards to a severance and shared use agreement for twenty-eight ninety-four Naperton Drive. This is in regards to the approval by the committee of adjustment for consent B thirteen, two thousand and seventeen, and consent B O one, two thousand and eighteen. As you will see from the documents that Solicitor Wayne Mahar from the county was a great assistance to the township in creating this document and providing some legal guidance for the township staff as well as for the, the applicant's solicitor as well. So Wayne did a really good job, and we found out a lot of information that the township's going to keep and were able to use this over again if this situation occurs. So when it came to the legal services for the cost of, of Wayne, it was twenty-five hundred dollars. And between Wade and their solicitor, they suggested that we split the costs equally as the township does benefit from the discussions that were had. So that is part of the agreement that they need to provide us with a check for the, their portion of the legal services before the consent can be completed.
Right.
So we're asking for council's approval to authorize the mayor clerk to sign the severance and shared use agreement and get it registered on title so we can get the consent, the two consents completed.
Well, that was gonna be my question. Why are we paying twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a service that somebody else applied for? But now, since we got some legal advice or find out, because we, this is, we shouldn't be paying this. I mean, they applied for it, they wanted to, but anyway, okay, I understand now, fine.
And they're responsible for their entire cost of their solicitor. We're only responsible for one half of our solicitor's cost. So we are not splitting anything that they've had to spend on their own side to get this deal completed.
Any other questions? Okay, so the recommendation there, move on second there. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Uh, the next item is in regards to the Grow Gas subdivision and the transfer of a block. When Grow Gas subdivision began many years ago, Second Street was under township jurisdiction. And when some of the paperwork was completed, the transfers were done to the township, the road widening and, and what have you. So now, as they're going to register the documents to get the title, uh, the work completed and get everything going, it's found out that the title for Block thirteen should actually go to the county of Middlesex, not to the township. So this is just documentation to get that corrected. I'm going to be transferring the Block thirteen from the township direction to the county for their road widening purposes. And there is no cost to the township for this to be completed.
So this, this extension for county, is that right? Like, you know, the, where do we start again? Strathroy has it, where there's three lanes or four lanes?
This is just the road widening past where the, the as-built road is now.
But is that belong, that belongs to Liddmekaf right now?
No, it belongs to the county. This is only the small portion that was on, they have to do the road widening so that all road widths of a certain size are to the correct standard. And this one, it was completed, it was actually. And this one, it was completed, it was actually into the township's name because we had jurisdiction at the time. The county hadn't finished registering the bylaw that applied to have the road changed from county, from township Adelaide Metcalf to county Middlesex. So it got transferred to us and we need to transfer it to the county because it is their road.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have the recommendation there? If anyone wants to move that?
I'll move.
Thank Council Sanders and seconded by Councilor Hendricks. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
Uh, the next item is a series of tenders and quotes which were issued in May. The first one is the single surface treatment quote, tender twelve, two thousand and eighteen, was issued on Friday, May the fourth and closed on Tuesday, May the fifteenth at three P M. The tenders were opened at three thirty by the Public Works Manager and the CAO Treasurer. Two quotes were rece- or two tenders were received, one from Nordon Contracting and Paving Limited in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and seven dollars plus H S T. And one from M S O Construction Limited in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred plus H S T. And the Public Works Manager has reviewed the tenders and is recommending, uh, M S O Construction be awarded the contract.
Question.
Council Sanders?
Have we used M S O before?
I believe, I believe so. I would have to go back and look at the records, but they're, they've been around a very long time. And they've done current shipping in this area, um, yeah, for most municipalities. I'd be very, very surprised, um, that they have not done any.
No, no, 'cause my question is, we're only looking at about, uh, thousand dollars difference and we've had Nordon for years. And if we, if it is, if we never had this company, I, I would, I would kind of recommend that we go with Nordon, but if they've been around for years and they do a good job, I have no problem with them. I'll go, you know, we would go with, I would go with M S O, but I didn't know whether we ever had anything to do with them or, or that job, their work or reputation or, I don't know.
The, the mayor, a, a reputation is just fine. They're, they're both very good companies from around. They do work all over Ontario. It's like, I, I can't comment on, um, not using M S O, um, so.
So I would like to use it because it's a bit of competition. I mean, it keeps you every day more honest, but hopefully it's gotta be a good company too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? So we have the recommendation there to go with M S O Construction Limited. Move on, second or? Okay, Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
On the second. The next tender is tender number thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, and that's cold recycled asphalt leveling cores. Again, the tenders were issued on Friday, May the fourth and closed on Tuesday, May the fifteenth. And the tenders were opened on the fifteenth by the Public Works Manager and CAO Treasurer. One tender was returned from Nordon Contracting and Paving Limited in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars plus H S T. And the Public Works Manager is recommending that they be awarded the contract.
Okay. So the recommendation there, any questions or comments? Do we have a mover for it?
Yeah.
I've.
Council McKinnon?
I, I just wondered why, uh, we would receive two on one project and the companies coming in and trying to get another job and, uh, the other company doing it.
Uh, M S O, it, it, Mister Mayor, um, M S O would use an, another company. They don't have a cold in place.
Oh, okay.
In their, in their.
So they don't do that down there.
They're aligned with another company and that company was contacted directly and was aware that the, this, this tender was coming to them.
Okay.
Um, and in fact, communication, I'm surprised that, that we did not receive something back from the company that was aligned with M S O. So that's.
Thank you.
Council Sanders?
My question, this will do all of, uh, Scotchner?
This will do all three blocks on Scotchner. Yet the only thing that's not included in that is the price of the reclaimed asphalt. So this is the, the, uh, the tender to, to put the reclaim down on the road and all the labor and all the cost to that.
So, and we have any idea how much the re- the reclaimed asphalt would be?
I have it written down in my notes, but it's gonna be, it's also very consider- considerable amount of money.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking to do all that for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand or something wrong.
Or, yeah, we're still talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
On top of this.
On top of this.
Nurse Stockman?
And that amount was also in the budget?
That amount is also in the budget, yes, correct. If they, uh.
Okay, no, no, I just wanted to, that's, that's cheap, very little.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for clarification, before we keep on going, the map that's between the two tenders there, that's for what, what?
That is for the s- uh, single surface treatment.
The top coat essentially.
So the top coat.
Okay.
So what they'll do is after the cold and place go down, it sits for a little bit and then we top sur- surface it with, uh, chip and dust. Or tar and chip.
Tar and chip.
And then we, we're gonna do winter, two blocks in winter, and then we're gonna do some patching on the mole ferry. That's why it's listed. And then also there's, uh, numerous areas around the blue circle, which is the Adelaide, uh, Adelaide shop, uh, um, up here such as pike and wood and, and that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So what has to happen first then, the Nor- so if we go with Nordon, which I assume we will, in the cold in place.
Yeah.
So that goes down and then we use the M S O people to do the top.
Top coat.
Okay, and that's gonna be all scheduled and lined up, so then that all works seamlessly.
It's all, the tenders are all, all, uh.
There's a timeframe for the completion of the, uh, cold in place asphalt and then the other one can't start before the end date of the first one, so.
Okay.
And hopefully whether we'll.
Scrape off, right? Ready it.
So moved.
Okay, move by Council McKinnon and seconded by Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. I agree, I was getting to that point too. I just was very confused by the map. Okay.
Okay, the next one is tender fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, which is the classified aggregate, the one-quarter chip, which will be used in the, uh, other tender. Uh, there was, uh, the tenders were issued on Friday, May the fourth and were closed on Tuesday, May the fifteenth, and they were open shortly after they were closed. Uh, the three tenders were received. The first one was from Clarence Carter and Sons Limited at eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents per tonne. Mackenzie and Henderson quoted sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents per tonne and Johnson Brothers Bothwell Limited nineteen dollars per tonne. Uh, the total quantity estimated is two thousand tons and the Public Works Manager has recommended that the tender from Mackenzie and Henderson be accepted.
So.
Move, move by Council Sanders and seconded by Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.
The next tender is tender number fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, and that's for a high-density polyethylene pipe. It was issued on Friday, May the fourth and closed on Tuesday, May the fifteenth. And tenders were opened in the same afternoon. I provided council with specified quantities of for-year information. Uh, the, um, quantities are going to be used in several projects, which is Walker's Drive Construction, the Haydring Project and other various other projects. The aggregate total from Blue Water Pipe was forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents plus H S T. Arm Tech was thirty-four thousand sixty-three dollars and nine cents plus H S T. And, uh, Ideal Pipe was thirty-four thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents plus H S T. The Public Works Manager has recommended that we select the tender from Ideal Pipe.
Okay, move on, second or? For the recommendation? Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, any discussion?
No.
Just have to say those are two very close prices.
That is close.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed and carried.
Yeah, carried.
The last tender for tonight is in regards to the new well and pumping system installation for the Napier Garage. Again, these tenders were issued on Friday, May the fourth and closed on Tuesday, May the fifteenth. The tenders were opened at three thirty on the fifteenth by the Public Works Manager and the CAO Treasurer. I've attached the scope of work for council's review and the tenders are based on an estimated well depth of eighty feet and piping of fifty feet. So we received two quotes, one from Lasky Services in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars plus H S T. And the others from McCloud Water Wells Limited for ten thousand two hundred and thirty dollars plus H S T. And it's being recommended by the Public Works Manager that we accept the quote from Lasky Services.
Council did not receive the scope of the.
Oh. I'm sorry.
What's that?
We, council didn't, did not receive the scope of the work.
We've just got the, uh, pipe stuff and then the tender.
Yeah.
Would you like, I can get a copy, do you like a moment?
You describe me what it was.
Yeah.
Yes, it's basically just outline every piece of the, the project. Um, it was all segregated based on different things so we could evaluate based on a per foot price and, and by an individual price. Uh, the ten thousand one hundred and forty-one is the aggregate total, if everything goes at an eighty-foot depth of well plus casing and the pumping system. And it may, and that's fifty feet from where the well finally is located to the building. And then we will have, uh, contract, uh, plumber or an electrician to do the hookup of the, uh, plumbing system.
And they're gonna bring the water to the, to the shop, right? Yep, yep. And they're di- they're gonna, Dick mentioned your well?
No, this is just the new well.
This is just the well, this is, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, Deputy Nurse Stockman?
Doesn't Lasky use McClouds to drill?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Does it over than a hundred bucks?
Yeah, but, uh, Lasky's doesn't have the, um, equipment anymore. He uses McCloud.
Yeah.
Okay, so McClouds does their drilling.
Well, I don't care who does it. Lasky says recommend to do the job. That's what's all about, it's the meat.
So you have the recommendation there for the.
I'll move.
Council Sanders and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
Even if you get it there, those wells are not that deep there. Sure, might be solid, but.
If you get the, the scope of the work, you'll see that there's, right, there's numerous, uh, different, uh, what they quoted on the job. It was hard to actually come up with a number because of, of the estimate of eighty and the estimate of fifty. If they're closer to the building, it goes down a little bit. If they're a little further from the building, it goes up a little bit. And there's, uh, if they miss the water at eighty and they have to start again, there's a price for, uh, for, um.
Rialto.
Rialto.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, that's always happening.
Well, we're relying on you to make sure it's not a drop off.
Oh, no, I'm not doing that. That is one job I will not be taking. I don't need the responsibility.
And the final report is a financial report and the payroll report for the month of April. Google report that the auditors were back in today and they've essentially wrapped up our two thousand and seventeen audit. So we should hopefully see our statements earlier this year.
Okay, is there any questions at all for the financial statement? So we need a motion to resolve that council accepts the financial report including the April twenty eighteen payroll as presented by the CAO Treasurer. Council Sanders and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Anything?
Uh, that's everything, other than I put the, um, Agri Tour brochure there. There is a website that you can go on and register and I will email that out to everyone tomorrow, so you can go on and register if you'd like to attend.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We have a motion to resolve that council accepts the report of the CAO Treasurer as presented. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, is there anything for other business at all?
I have one question for Jeff. The catch basin, uh, I was talking to Colton yesterday. He's got it all cleaned up. How do you want it?
We're gonna get, um, Mike from Sanitation Sewers is gonna come and, uh, clean it all up and flush it.
Now, you were saying we're gonna come Monday, but doesn't matter, whatever.
Wow, yeah, and I have listed a couple other spots.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Just for clarification, what spots are going on council notes?
Oh, there's a, there was a, a, a catch basin on Napier Road, uh, just north of Melwood on the west side that was completely, um, covered with material. And in fact, um, if it wasn't for, uh, uh, Point, uh, Joe pointed it out, uh, Council Sanders pointed it out and, uh, we cleaned off the top of it. Uh, Colton didn't even know it was at, at that point. Um, it's completely plugged, like.
Well, you know what happened? They, 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 remember they used that?
Oh, yeah.
They ditched that and a lot of the gravel is in the field because over the years, a lot of gravel ends up in the ditch. And some of that, the gravel's in the bottom of that new ditch. And the catch basin was covered, and I usually clean it off every spring. I drive by there. I take the, you know, the leaves or whatever. And I went there, couldn't find it. I had a spade and it was covered that much by gravel. And the catch basin is full of gravel, right full.
Right, well.
So because of all them stones that came down through. And I said to Jeff, I says, I used to clean it. It's a little beyond me.
Yeah.
So Curtis came with the backhoe and, oh, it is.
He's put, uh, we've, we've taken and put some, uh, larger stone around it to protect it and, um, so that we can make sure this doesn't happen again, so.
And that's what happened. A lot of this gravel came down with the water and ended up in the catch basin. But that should be okay now after it's cleaned.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for other business? Deputy Nurse Stockman?
I guess, uh, while we're, uh, asking Jeff a few questions, just wondering on the status of summer help?
Uh, we've conducted, um, interviews. We've just, uh, there is one outstanding applicant that, uh, we are talking with. And, uh, as soon as that's settled, then we'll probably bring something forward.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? No. Uh, just a report on county council, we had that, uh, earlier today. And a couple of things to note, um, we're looking at the last kind of draft of the catchment areas for SWIFT. So the, uh, Southwest Integrated Farmer Network and seeing those areas that are in need or, uh, removing those ones that have, since the last maps that came to us, um, there's some areas that are going to be getting fiber to those areas, so those are now removed because they don't need to be, uh, in those areas. Um, from the last time that you have seen it, I think Kathy sent it out a few months ago, nothing has changed other than the, uh, circle in the Napier area, I believe, has shifted. It will be shifting east to then catch the people on Kerwood and also the Texas Alhern Ranch. They're requesting that they need a, a higher bandwidth for them as well. Uh, other than that, those circles are all the same, meaning the Adelaide Village, Kerwood, Karen Gorm, uh, Kaiser and I believe,
Killmark.
um, over in the Strathroy area. Um, I don't think the Killmark area is in there. It's, there's not enough density of, of houses to, um, accommodate.
There's a lot of people there, but they don't say much.
Um, and then also, uh, during the meeting today, we also had, uh, the B O N was there and did a presentation of what they're up to and what they're doing and just doing, and encouraging people to participate in their walk that happens in Matt Bridges every year, the Run, Walk and Roll. Something like that. Julie Simpson recommended that they change the name to Riverfield. Um, and the other thing, just to note, the, there is a number of solar projects in the correspondence and one of them is within our township and it, it's actually for the, uh, transfer station and, um, lagoons, what do they call it now? The, for the Strathroy.
For the Strathroy.
Uh, transfer station within Adelaide Metcalf here. Um, so they did have the solar project that they already have there now and they're looking at further developing that, having a, a larger area. The unique thing about that though is that Strathroy, Caradoc hasn't even received the notice yet either. So they, the first time they seen it was actually at county council. So, uh, what, you know, the mayor from Strathroy, Caradoc is just, you know, letting everyone know is to make sure you read those agreements to make sure you know what is in them so that you know what, um, what could happen in the future because they, she was not aware of this upcoming project that could potentially be happening in, on, at the transfer station. So, that was quite neat. Um, and then the other thing, and I need to grab a phone, um, and I'll get Jennifer to email it out, but there is a open house for Denny's, um, for their new addition that's happening and that's on Sunday, May twenty-seventh. And that's, I believe, I'll get the exact time, but I believe it's in the morning. Um, and I, uh, I've encouraged everyone on council to attend. I think, um, you'll be quite pleased with, uh, the new room there and the name of the room as well. Um, I won't give anything away, but I think everybody, again, on council and the municipality will be, and the township will be pleased with, uh, what they did there and what they're doing in that room, so.
What time is it? What time is it?
Um, I'll get that email, I'll order it on to Jennifer, she'll send it out.
We're qualifying at Dresden at twelve o'clock.
I believe it's at eleven, but I have to, I have to duck check. I just put it in my calendar, but I put it all day and put an actual time. So that's, uh, instead of doing their regular, I think they're doing a tree planting, but that's what they're doing this year with the new, um, addition they have there and doing an open house style.
Yeah, I think they're having something there and then the tree planted afterwards.
So that's everything from myself, there's nothing else moving the bylaws? Uh, the first one is resolved that the third and final reading be given to bylaw number twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen. It's the zoning bylaw amendment for Ralph Boss Meats Limited and the bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal be attached.
If, if I may comment on this, um, Mister Boss is running out of time to get his severance completed. He did submit the applicable, uh, reference plan Friday afternoon at three thirty. So wasn't it time to send it out to council for inclusion on the bylaw, but we do have the reference plan and, uh, he will be just shy of the time for the lapsing of the consent to get this completed, so.
Counsel McKinnon and seconded by Counsel Sanders, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. And, uh, resolved that all three readings be given to bylaws number twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, the council quote of conduct. Uh, bylaw number twenty-seventeen, twenty eighteen, severance and shared use agreement for twenty-eight ninety-four Naperton Drive. And bylaw number twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, that confirms council proceedings and that the bylaws, the bylaws be signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal be attached. Counsel McKinnon and Counsel Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed and carried. And before I do a motion to adjourn, also just want to note that we did receive a thank you card from the Brooks family uh, for the donation that we gave, uh, from passing of their mother, our mother-in-law. Okay, so a motion to resolve that the, uh, meeting be adjourned at eight thirteen P M. Counsel Sanders and Deputy Mr. Stockman, all those in favor, opposed and carried.